My call to order, the January 23 meeting of the Saginaw Planning Commission. Could we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Bland.
Present.
Commissioner Faust.
Present.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Lamar.
Present.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Nash.
Present.
Commissioner Orange.
Present.
And Commissioner Ossash.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right. Our next order of business is approval of the minutes from November 28, 2023. We have a motion to approve, and then we can look at any changes.
Moved to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any corrections? Anything to be corrected on the minutes? No corrections. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. Next is the approval of our agenda for this evening. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or comments on the agenda for this evening? Hearing none. All those in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have approved this evening's agenda. Moving on to our favorite part of the evening, the elections of chairpersons, vice chairpersons, and secretary for the commission for this coming calendar year. Are there nominations for chairperson?
I'll nominate John Milne for president. Support.
Okay. Are we able to do this as a one thing, or you want to do each office separate?
You could go to the slide.
Which other way?
So my three.
Okay. Okay. Any other nominations for chairperson? I'm seeking nominations for the vice chair.
We nominate Jack Nash.
Support.
Two seats for him, he can't get to them. It's been nominated and supported for Mr. Jack Nash to continue as vice chairperson. And we have a third office secretary, which is listed as vacant. Do we have an acting secretary then? How have we been handling this?
We did have a secretary. I think it was Tom Braley, maybe, and it hasn't been replaced since he was off. The secretary does not have the duties that a typical secretary staff takes care of.
Got that.
I would nominate Carla Lamar.
Support.
Any support? Have Commissioner Lamar. Are there any other nominations? I will ask for a motion to approve that slate of candidates for officers.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have our officers for this year. We have new business. New business begins with a public hearing, J-23-0208, special use permit, site plan review for proposed takeout restaurant at 2926 Hess. Good evening. I am the chair of the Saginaw City Planning Commission. This is our regular meeting of the planning commission. When the petitioner for this public hearing, when it comes up, you will be called. Please come forward to the podium. Give your name and address to the secretary for the record. After the appellant's presentation, others may comment. Our meetings are videotaped, so it is important that only one person speak at a time, and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use, or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions made by the commission are then forwarded to city council. Any questions? If none, we've had the roll call. The public hearing guideline is, the purpose of the public hearing is to address the commission with regard to the subject of the hearing, not other topics. Speakers shall address their remarks to the commission as a whole and not to individual commission members, city staff, or the audience. The applicant whose application is the subject of the hearing or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of the meeting will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case? Fisher, come forward.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Randall Carter. I live at 1008 Cleveland Street, Saginaw, Michigan, 48602. And I am here to speak on my behalf of wanting to open this barbecue takeout restaurant located at 2926 Hess Street. I'm trying to get all my ducks in a row here and get everything to where I can get it completed, hopefully by the summer.
Are there any other comments on this petition from the public? Anyone else wish to comment on the petition? And for the third time, any additional comment about the petition for this special use permit and site review? If not, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second over here. Moved and supported to end the public hearing. Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. No, I did that. We will now consider the petition for approval. Entertain a motion to approve the petitioners.
Project?
Yep, so moved.
Second.
We may now have discussion.
Can I get an amendment on?
Excuse me?
Can we get an amendment on that with the contingencies that are built into the communication? That the approval will be contingent upon?
Oh, okay, yes.
Those items that are listed.
If we need to state that, that would be... We need a particular commissioner to make that?
Just...
I'll move to amend it. Add the conditions.
It hasn't been voted on yet.
No, no.
I think it could still be. Whoever made the original motion can...
Got you. I see the staff is awaiting a certain piece of information.
Oh, okay.
I supported it.
Yep.
No, it'll be part of the original motion because it hasn't been...
Right. Just an amendment in part.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for an amendment to the original...
No, it's there.
It's already in.
Okay.
Okay. The conditions are a signed lease agreement between the applicant and CSX Railroad authorizing the use of the property for construct paved parking. Number two, review and approval of the site plan by engineering.
Okay.
I second.
Do we have discussion on the motion? Are we going to do a separate one for the amendment then?
No.
Or just? It's the whole. It's the whole. Okay. Commissioner Lamar. I'm sorry, Floyd. Did you have one?
I do have a question with regards to the parking spaces. So the requirement for a takeout restaurant is one for every 150th gross area. How many of the parking spaces for the nine that are allotted are going to be for handicaps?
There is one along Hess.
One?
Yeah. Which is all that's required.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure that we have the one.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you. I'm assuming, and you can correct if I'm wrong, Mr. Golan, but have any... I take it no objections were received from any of the residents to the west?
Correct.
Or the property on either one?
Correct.
Thank you.
A question for staff looking at the aerial view we have here. Would it be correct to say that the current parking is actually mostly on public right-of-way? That it's just been used for parking area? That the parking for this petition moves over onto the leased land?
Yeah, that's correct. The zoning ordinance does provide for public parking in the area between the street, or in this case would be the curb and the sidewalk, in a public right-of-way if it's paved, as it is.
Would that be used?
I'm sorry?
That current parking area?
Yeah, that's where the handicap parking space is going to go. So it's...
Oh, it just gets reconfigured a little bit. Yeah.
This is a...
Okay.
May I see? Commissioner Milne?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Certainly, you may.
Why does it say Saginaw Township? Shouldn't it say Saginaw City?
Sorry, word.
It says 2926 Hess Avenue. Then it says northeast, and it says Saginaw Township, Saginaw County, Michigan. That should be Saginaw City, correct? Or is it Saginaw Township?
Oh, it is.
Oh, right here.
Oh, I'm not sure. That was provided, that's probably incorrect. That's provided by the company that did that, the site plan.
Well, that should be corrected, correct?
Yes. Should be Saginaw.
Chairman?
Comment?
Question.
Yes.
If I went up on a question about the handicap, I see in the blueprint here, there's six parking spaces on the railroad right-of-way.
And you're supposed to have nine altogether.
Where are...
There's three in the front of the building.
Is that where the area is curved? It doesn't look big enough, three including a handicap.
So it's right in the front of the building. There are three spaces that are 90 degrees to the building.
They aren't marked as spaces, though, are they?
Well, if you see, there's a three circled, and those spaces are drawn in there, one of which is handicap.
Oh, they're not shaded. I see what Mr. Golan is referring to. Three of them are directly in front to the left of the building, including the handicap spot. And the additional shaded pavement to the east side is the access to the other six spots. Some of it is utilizing existing paving.
Is that closer to where the dumpster is? Is that one of them?
The dumpster is off to the west of the building, on the side, on the west side of the building.
All right. Well, I'm just not catching it very well, so I'll take your word for it.
I apologize. I mean, I don't have any other way to give you a blown up...
It's just the way DC drew it, or D and M.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? We have a motion made and seconded for approval of the petition and the site, special use permit and a site plan with conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Petition is approved. All right. Public hearing. Our next order of business is a presentation on the capital improvement plan. Staff?
My name is Jonathan Baker. Many of you probably remember me from last year. This year, going to be a brief synopsis because it's pretty much the same operations we did last year. Going forward, you know what a capital improvement plan is. We do it every year. City plans out six years of projects. I show you the ones that are publicly impacting for this year. These capital improvements are physical facilities or assets, which involve a substantial investment and last a long time, fire barns, new bridges, roads, sewer lines. A lot of the big projects are road and sewer and water lines. Any project exceeding $20,000 must be submitted for your approval. And the CIP list is the proposal for new capital. It also shows demographics, location, cost, means of financing, relationship to others, projects that are happening at the same time. When you receive them, they're prioritized by the department. Then we get your prioritization, and then it goes to the city manager for his prioritization. This is updated annually. The CIP is important because it optimizes how we can use taxpayer dollars to get as many projects completed as we can each year with the money that we have available. This also allows each department to implement a plan so that they can phase in all of their new capital projects throughout the years. The step one of the CIP process is that the department directors submit their reports or requests to OMB. We then compile all of these projects and organize them as they have submitted and propose them to you. Once you and the city manager have evaluated the capital plan, we then take it and implement it into our budget and present it in May every year. This year's timeline was, we sent out the forms to the departments in October, got them back in November, presented to you today, and then we'll need them back from you by March 22. These are all digital this year again. Bob will be sending out the score sheets with all of the projects attached in an Excel document. So you'll be able to just click the tab and go to them, and then go back to the front tab and put in your score. This is what each form looks like. It's the same form that we switched to three or four years ago now, so it should be pretty familiar for you. These are the priority ratings that we have, again, switched to three or four years ago. Imperative, essential, important, and desirable. It's basically what separates a want from a need, and how much you need it on that scale. This shows the funding request, what comes out of each fund, if there's a grant that's being used to pay for it, if they have reserved monies for it. All of this is their analysis that is received from the department that tells why the project's important, how it impacts their operation, and what progress, if any, has been made so far. And this will show whether it's part of the master plan or something that they're doing with the state in conjunction, and if there would or would not be matching funding, lost. I will now get into a quick overview of some of the bigger projects that we are seeing for this year. This doesn't look quick, but it's a...
Microdot.
I'm going to kind of cherry pick some of them. We have South Wheeler Street from Michigan to Grashit, and that is a complete road, tear-up, put down water lines, sewer lines, the whole thing from Michigan to Grashit. That's 1.6 million. Hess Avenue from Jefferson and Sheridan, same thing. Another one is Adams and Cass from Michigan to Niagara. So we're getting a lot of big street projects. The riverfront Ironbell Trail resurfacing, we're still trying to get that complete, to get that to be a... I think it's a non-motorized trail that they're trying to complete for a circuit. The water and sewer projects, they're more your typical. We still have the unfunded mandate for the lead service line replacement, and then we have the line rehabilitation and replacement of sewer and water main that we continue to do every year. Some other projects that we're looking at doing are a hazmat vehicle, mobile command unit for the fire department, a fire boat, the cemetery road replacement, which they want to go through all the cemeteries and redo all the roads because they've been pretty treacherous with the flooding and everything that's been happening. Ojibwe with the improvements that we're doing with erosion and all of that, they want to do the electrical updates and updates of the stage, as well as the crutching to reshape the road. Any questions?
The first question I had is on the lead line replacement. Is any part of that grant funded for that fiscal year? I know we've had some grant funding in that.
Yes. I believe that we get some money from the...
Get from state.
I can't remember the acronym. The state, yeah. There's an acronym, I believe, that's involved with it. But yeah, we get some funding from that.
Okay. Additionally, on the fire department projects, are any portions of that coming from the trust fund?
Yeah. No. None of... I don't think any of these are. But I do believe the fire boat has a grant that is covering a large portion of it.
Okay. I'm sure I'll see the detail.
Yeah, it's all in the score sheets.
Okay. Any other commissioners' questions? Mr. Ossash?
Going back to the lead line replacement, because we talked about, staff talked about some of the grants that are coming through, has anything come through any of the infrastructure bills that were passed through the Fed or coming through the state yet? I know sometimes it can take a while for the money to get here, but...
Yeah, I think we're still waiting to hear on that. As far as I'm aware.
Based on our meeting with the department, a lot of that lobbying that they'll be doing is in April.
Got you.
So we're trying to push for being ready for April.
I was kind of wondering where that was at, so thank you. Yeah. One more question, if I may?
Certainly.
Okay. The Ojibwe Island project?
Yes.
We had talked about that last year, and I talked to one of our engineers about that too, because the stage with that... So there's going to be two phases. The stage, are we fixing the stage out of that?
I believe so. I believe they want to fix this, they want to completely fix the stage and redo the electrical.
Okay. So we're going to take that on ourselves? That's not going to be conjunction with the county anymore?
I haven't heard anything about that.
Okay, so we'll take it on. And the electrical upgrades that we're doing, I had mentioned before, because you've got... What are they looking to do, just the stage?
I believe so.
Okay. And, because I had mentioned to them, will it be in the SIP? Because I mentioned to them before, when you're on the stage, you're looking to the right, usually where the food trucks are. I was, you know, suggested and proposed, and they thought it was a good idea to electrify that area so we can, if we ever have an event, that they're not running their food trucks off generators.
If they did?
Yeah.
Put that in, it will be in that...
It'll be in that plan?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look for it then.
The issue is that, like, oftentimes they're just talking about specific things that's been longstanding. So like, the stage and electrical for the stage has been something that they've been putting into the CIP. It's not something that, like, the modification hasn't really been discussed with us on that, but that doesn't mean it's not going to happen.
Okay. Yeah, and the stage is important, too, because even the bands have to run on generators, and the stage needs an overhaul. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Anybody else?
Any other questions for Mr.?
Just want to add something to this that we've recently been talking with the departments because oftentimes you see a lot of the projects that is attached to their asset management plan, which is required by the state of Michigan. So we're trying to connect with them, have a better relationship with them, make sure that the CIP is in alignment with their current asset management plan.
Got you. Okay.
Maybe someone trying to bring along with water and sewer.
Yeah.
And then hopefully kind of establish, we want to kind of steal from that and bring it out to more areas.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation.
No problem. Thank you.
So as mentioned, the score sheets will be forthcoming tomorrow. I'll email those all to you.
I remember last year I had quite a bit of trouble trying to use that. Is there a contact we can make, a number or a name that we can use to contact if we have that problem?
It'd be Jonathan Baker.
Well, it'd be, yeah, put it in the email if you don't mind.
Yes.
We have that information.
Yes.
You'll put my number in there?
Thank you.
So timeline-wise, we would have one more meeting before that our scoring has to be back to staff.
Well, preferably if you can get the scoring done by next meeting, yes. Which is going to be, by the way, the 20th of February.
Right.
Because the normal meeting schedule would land on election day.
Okay. All right.
Oh, I did say it was due March.
Oh, okay.
So.
Stay corrected.
Sorry.
We'll be able to have a reminder if anyone hasn't gotten it in by the next meeting for the March meeting. Okay. Next order of business is our annual report, which was in our packets. All the commissioners, we've had an opportunity to look at the report. Mr. Golan, I assume the report covers our requirements for our annual report?
Yeah, that's correct. We are required to provide the annual report, and then this really represents all the activities that have happened last year. So there's really no presentation to it. I just would be happy to entertain any questions if I have them.
I'd just like to say that the report was concise and well-written.
Thank you.
Should I seek a motion to approve the annual report?
Moved to approve. Annual report.
Support. Moved and supported to approve the annual report. Any additional comments from commissioners? If none, all those in favor of the annual report?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have approved our annual report. Next item is approval of the 2024 calendar year meeting schedule. The commissioners have seen the schedule and the notations for the ones that are off the regular days due to elections and holidays. Any additional comments about the proposed schedule? Entertain a motion to approve our meeting schedule for the next year.
So moved.
Support Nash.
It's been moved and supported to approve our meeting schedule for 2024. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Schedule for the next year is approved. We publish that publicly, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Next order of business, general public comment. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the commission?
I won't for it.
All right. We shall move on to old business. I don't think we have anything on the table, nothing postponed.
I have a question.
Of course.
Yes. Are we going, are we looking at, looking at the... What is that?
Zoning ordinance?
The master plan. Are we reviewing any parts of it this year, or it's just an ongoing thing that we just keep looking at stuff that we need to work on?
It's an ongoing thing, but if you have some things that you would like to bring up to review, I'd be happy to report on them.